I'm going to call the September 17th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman, absent. Moritz.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Minutes from August 20, 2024. Does anybody have any questions regarding those?
Mr. President? I have a question. When we got this, it said it had been edited. Why did we decide to go verbatim for the first small part of the public lands and buildings instead of just having it as minutes? Why are we picking and choosing what's verbatim? Are we going to make the entire seven minutes verbatim? Because if so, then they've got to be all rewritten. And if not, why would we change that? It went from being three lines to like eight.
I felt the need for it.
You felt the need for it. Was it necessary? Is the actual...
Yeah, I think it was. Yeah.
I personally don't believe that this was necessary.
Any other questions regarding minutes? Motion to approve minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Is there any visitors who would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, please don't take this in a negative way, but in a way that all of you can modify any outcome. You have the ability to do so. Each member of this government needs to be mindful of the ways people are watching, how our government bodies function and not functioning for the people of this community. However, I feel that some people will take anything that someone says personally, no matter what, and then post on social media in a way that always comes in a negative way or into a narrative that suits their needs. I really don't see much positive post on anything that people do or things that are done right by this council. What about telling the truth? People in this community are waking up to the nonsense information that's being spread within our community. I have to admit, I have been wrong before, and I have called certain camp members of council and let them know this or come to meetings to state this. I don't come here to argue, spout off, or make conditions to make a scene for the public to see or have the police involved. My facts come from this very same building by the way of public records request or information by council meetings and their minutes. So if somebody wants to dispute this, the facts come within the government. I come to council to voice my concerns about issues, help others with their problems that affect them. I always wonder why these same people don't come to council meetings and redress their government or even come to these meetings and offer any solutions to any issues that come before this council. Those who do want to address council, come prepared. State facts have documentation to be handed out to the council to look at. Follow the council rules, and as they are posted on the city's website, be respectful. We can always agree to disagree on issues and topics, and I'm good with that. Secondly, every member of this council decided to run as an elected office, for elected office. You were voted on by the people of this community. You took an oath to office. You raised a right hand in front of a judge and made a solemn promise to undertake and uphold your office. That was for the good of the citizens in this community. You're paid to attend regular meetings and committee meetings and to conduct business of this city. However, in the past few months, several committee meetings and only one regular council meeting could not be held because some of you are not showing up for your sworn duty to serve the city of Bucyrus. I understand that certain things happen, medical issues, illness, one-time events. But in January of this year, after taking the oath to office, this council only changed a few dates on the schedule and voted on each one by each one of you. I understand that certain times for special meetings need to take place, but not for conducting regular committee meetings or arranging these meetings so councilmen members can show up for their duties as elected official. Why at 5:00? Most citizens don't get off work until then. Basically, council committees are denying citizens their right to attend meetings, participate in them, and redress their government. However, there is no excuse for not upholding your duties as office. Getting paid by the taxpayers of this community for not showing up is unacceptable. You are still getting paid no matter what. I wish that everyone could, couldn't, everyone could not, could go to work but not have and getting and not getting paid and not and still getting paid for it. I'm sorry. If any member of this council doesn't want to commit to their oath to office, then let someone else fulfill the duties of that office. To keep the city moving forward toward the right direction, I feel that it's only right for the people of this community. In closing, I currently serve on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance and the City Planning Commission. I attend all meetings and provide information and documents as a team member. I also provide my assistance with the fundraising efforts for the poll this year. Yet, I don't get paid for this. I do it to help my community. As council members, you all need to start working toward the citizens of this of Bucyrus. Show up for meetings when they are regularly scheduled. Find ways to better this community. Look for ways to save money. If you cannot fulfill the requirement of your position, no one is stopping you from resigning. I will never change to suit other narratives or hidden agendas. Never give, never give in, never give up. Yes, I will be back with more information that the public deserves to know. It's called transparency. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, going to move on to communications and petitions. We have an email from Mrs. Shireman dated 9/15. She wanted it read. Do you want to read it?
Sure. It's dated September 15th, 2024. Ms. Miranda, could you ask the council president to read at the council meeting? Good evening, Mr. President. I would like to take a moment to clear the air on why I have not been at some meetings. I have filed a civil protection order on an individual who attends council meetings as a visitor. There would be no way I could handle that situation. So with that being said, I read Mrs. Slater's letter to the editor where she broke down each name and their attendance. I would like to thank her for all her hard work. It was during that time I needed to some way justify my absence through the CPO procedure. Hopefully, you were given a paper I have submitted for Kaylee Lewis, treasurer, to complete concerning myself wanting to donate $243 or one half back to the Bucyrs City Government. More details are in the letter. I'm also asking our law director to assist Ms. Lewis on the proper paperwork. I hope this will satisfy the administration, council, council president, and Mrs. Slater, and the citizens of Bucyrs. In closing, I would like to say that I would like this all to be over and we can get back to the business of the citizens. For me, being in that council seat is a long-time achievement that tops any achievement I have accomplished before. With all due respect, Carolyn J. Flynn Shireman.
Need a motion to accept and file? Yes, Vicki.
I would like to comment to Mrs. Shireman's letter or email, if I may, please. In response to her wanting to clear the air on why she has not been to some meetings, Mrs. Shireman did file with the Crawford County, with the Crawford County Common Police Court on August 20th, her petition for stop, her petition for civil stalking protection order. Since the petition will not be heard by the court until September 25th, and since a protection order has not been issued at this time, I do not believe she can use the CPO procedure to justify her absences at both council and committee meetings. I secured today a copy of Mrs. Shireman's September 14th email to the Bucyrs Law Director and forwarded it by her to several other city officials and employees. The email states as follows. Hello, Brandon. I am asking you to do on your end what is necessary for me to decrease my salary in half. I would like you to proceed on this as soon as possible, starting with October 2024. I would like to add a clause which states that I can change back after February of 2025. I would like to state that it was never about the money. It has always been the greatest accomplishment I have ever accomplished. It has been the greatest achievement I have ever accomplished. I love my seat at council, and I am sorry how things have turned out. I don't want to be that clown council has been referred to. I don't have a dog in that fight. My fight is to bring an end to all this nonsense Clarissa Slater has created between council and administration. In the meantime, please entertain me with the finished papers I can sign. I am thinking council would have to vote. I am not a seasoned council member. I am, for sure, still learning. I don't feel that taxpayers should pay me a full salary when they are only getting half a seasoned member. Since Ms. Shireman's email was not sent to the email address of interim law director Gernert, I'm unsure if he received it.
I did receive it.
You did, okay. Ohio Revised Code Section 731.07 states that the salary of any officer of a city shall not be increased or diminished during the term for which he was elected. Ohio Revised Code Section 705.13 states in part that the legislative authority of a municipal corporation shall by ordinance fix the salary of its members, which shall be paid in equal monthly installments. For each absence from regular meetings of the legislative authority, unless authorized by a two-thirds vote of all members thereof, there shall be deducted a sum equal to 2% of each annual salary. On September 12th, I received an opinion of interpretation from Attorney Gobrik confirming that absences from regular meetings pertain to council meetings only. Based on Ohio Revised Code Section 731.07, I do not believe Mrs. Shireman's request to decrease her salary in half for a period of time can be done nor should it be done, so to avoid setting a precedent. Based on Ohio Revised Code Section 705.13, Mrs. Shireman's annual pay of $6,813.43 should be deducted by 2% or $136.27 for her unexcused absence from the July 23rd council meeting. Mrs. Shireman stated in her first, or in the email that was read tonight, in closing, she would like to say that she would like this all to be over so we can get back to the business of the citizens. I too would like all of this to be over so council can get back to city business. So as I sit here, I plead that everyone stop posting unkind social media comments. If you find you are the subject of these postings, please do not reply to them. By not replying, I have to believe that the situation we have all been put in will stop. Please prove me right. Thank you.
Do we want to refer to salary, the 2% thing, to finance committee that you just mentioned?
Why do you have to refer to finances? It's in the Ohio Revised Code. Or I guess I'll defer to what the interim law director feels.
Based on my conversations with Carolyn today, this entire thing is moot.
So the reading of her email is moot?
With having her, having her salary and then donating it to the city, that whole thing is moot as of right now.
Well, I, personally, I don't think there should be any donating back to the city. That's not how it works. If you are absent from a meeting, a council meeting and a regular council meeting, according to the Ohio Revised Code, it states, and it's an unexcused absence, 2% of your annual salary is to be deducted.
I think that there's some kind of disconnect. She wants to donate her, half of her full salary going forward. Whatever she receives, she wants to donate half of it back. And the mechanism of reducing it by half is a moot issue as of right now.
Okay, but she has been unexcused from the July 23rd council meeting. So there will be a deduction made from her pay.
Is that something the auditor has to do?
So typically, in our office, we would have to have a letter from the department saying that. So if someone wanted to decrease someone's pay or withhold pay in the law director's office, we would need a letter from the law director. If we would, you know, someone wanted to do that in something under administration, we would take a letter from Bruce or Tommy. So there would probably have to be some letter informing that council wanted that to happen for our records, even though it is part of the ORC just because we don't maintain any kind of attendance in our office for council. You're just salaried, so you know, we don't have like a timesheet. So if you guys could provide a letter, that would help my office.
So I think you're conflating the two. A 2% reduction based on attendance is completely separate and independent of her wish to donate half of her salary to the city of Bucyrs.
That I understand.
Okay.
I'm just afraid if we allow this donation, which if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying it's not going to happen now. She doesn't want to do it.
Not by operation of law, by reducing the salary by ordinance. She's free to do what she wishes with her own money.
Is it 2% per meeting missed or just a 2%? Once you miss one meeting, it's just down 2% one time?
It's for each meeting you miss. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Unexcused. It's for each one unexcused.
Yeah, unexcused, yes. A missed meeting where you are unexcused.
Is it council meeting or is it?
Council meeting only.
Well, it doesn't sound like the council needs to make any action on it. It sounds like, does it say in the Revised Code we have to vote to do that?
No.
So then, I suppose the law director could just, well, the clerk can tell the law director that meeting has been missed. Law director could then send the letter to the auditor's office.
I do believe that would fall to you as council president.
That would be you to do it.
So you want me to contact your office and tell you to deduct her pay?
No.
No, the letter should come from you as council president. And then go to Caitlin.
Well, I will draft a letter and then have you review it for legal.
I can do that.
First, and then if you approve, then it can get signed.
Okay.
Do we want to make a motion to accept and file Carolyn's letter dated 9/15?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept and file. I responded to it.
Need a second?
One second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, that was close, so we're going to have a roll call vote on that.
Myers?
No.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Moritz?
Yes.
Sherick?
No.
Hickman?
No.
Me.
No.
It fails to get accepted and filed because we only had two yes votes and four no votes. Moving on, standing committee reports. Planning Committee, Mr. May.
Let's see, we talked to, should be able to get 1189.03. We all got a copy of the reservicing requirements. It looked good to me. It had a definition up there. Is there any problems with that that anybody saw? Hopefully, we can kick that out at committee meetings and get it to full council. The amendment for the pond ordinance, I talked to Mr. Diebler today, and I told him the situation of we have to add in the McKevers to the ordinance, the engineering part of it. And he understands that. And I'm not sure how we're going to do it, but he, the guy that wants, that he wants to dig the pond lives in Indiana, and he doesn't want to come here until he's approved for it. So we're working on that. So maybe we can touch base a little bit more now in committee. Marjorie Wanda dispensaries, food trucks, we're still discussing that. That's it.
Any questions for Planning Committee? Seeing none. Public lands and building committee, Ms. Sherick.
We are currently still sitting with the whole YMCA thing and the unknown sales for property. And other than that, I have nothing new.
Any questions for public lands and buildings? Finance, or not, I'm sorry, Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. DeShawn.
The Health and Safety Committee met, well, at our August 22nd, 2024 meeting. We requested non-emergency legislation amending the traffic control map and file to provide for the placement of a stop sign at the southeast corner of Pearl Street and Nevada Road for northbound traffic, and that legislation will be read for the first time this evening. End of my report.
Any questions for Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none. Finance Committee, Mr. Myers.
I think we're good.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Economic Development Committee, Mr. Hickman.
At the request of the Tourism Advisory Council, I'll be giving an update on our September 10th, 2024 meeting. We went around the room and discussed our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities and our threats, to which we can further attack and strengthen the tourism bureau as a whole. We finally have a landed page for our, for their marketing campaign. It's on HTTPS, www dot visitbusiris dot org. The landing page has done remarkably well, and I do believe they're going to try to add a calendar to the website to add all current and upcoming events. Speaking of current and ongoing events, the Pickwick Place Flannel Fest will be happening again on September 21st and 22nd, and will include apple treats and an apple cannon activity. The Pickwick Place apple picking season will run through September to October. The Apple Bash at Pickwick will take place September 28th. And the Traveling Johnny Appleseed Exhibit will make its way to Low Voak Park during October 15th through the 31st. And the Johnny Appleseed Craft for Kids will be held at the Bucyrs Public Library September 26th. Other marketing events, the Fly-In and Pancake Breakfast, September 21st at the airport. The Bucyrs Lions Club Walk for Pediatric Cancer, September 28th at 9:00 AM. And they have Gallions Oktoberfest on here as well for September 26th through the 28th. And so far, that's all I have from my report.
Any questions for Economic Development? Vicki?
I have no question, but I would like to say that Casey Grau was scheduled to give a Bucyrs Tourism and Visitors presentation on Thursday, September the 19th, to the Economic Development Committee. However, due to a strategy planning work meeting conflict that she has that same day, her presentation has now been rescheduled to Thursday, October the 17th.
Any other questions for Economic Development? Service Committee, Mr. Moritz.
I've had a chance to look over some of the Title IX ordinance that we're rewriting and revisiting. We should be able to talk more about those this week's committee meeting.
Any questions?
I got a few little tweaks and changes I might want to do. Mostly verbal, thanks to Vicki.
Any questions for Service Committee? Special Ad-Hoc Committee, Mrs. DeShawn.
The Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules and Procedure for Bucyrs City Council, Bucyrs Codified Ordinance, Chapter 111 Council, Rules of Council, and Bucyrs Codified Ordinance, Chapter 113 Ordinances and Resolutions, is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, September the 24th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Excuse me? September 24th, Tuesday.
Any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Special Ad-Hoc Committee, Mr. May?
No report.
Any questions for him? Traffic Commission, Mayor Trucco?
We have no report. Just time.
Any questions for Traffic? Motion to accept committee reports collectively?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherick made a motion. Mr. Moritz seconded it. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, Mayor Trucco.
No report.
Any questions from the mayor or for the mayor? Safety Service Director's report, Mr. Starter?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all can see, Mr. Mayor Trucco is recovering well. He's here with us tonight. He was here with us a couple weeks ago also, so it's a good thing. The auditor and administration have started their first rounds of budgeting for the 2025 year. The administration has held a meeting with the U.S. EPA on Thursday, August 29th, 2024. The U.S. EPA is not in favor of our storm and sewer separation taking another eight years to get to the 50% CSO reduction. The EPA stated that the city had sent them a draft of a plan in the 2020 that stated that the city would be at 50% CSO reduction in eight years. The city has now proposed the completion of a 50% CSO reduction for the year of 2032. The city has mentioned that the U.S. EPA that had continued doing projects and that would help with the reduction of the city's CSOs. Currently, the city's biggest project is the wastewater treatment plant. The administration would like to remind the public to fill out their service line inventory if you haven't already done so. The city may remain in compliance with the Ohio EPA. The date, the due date for the final phase of the service line inventory is October 21st, 2024. The administration would like to again announce the Spooktacular being held on Saturday, October 29th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Crawford County Fairgrounds. Oh, thank you for the, yes, the 19th. The ASME is currently looking for donors for this event. Anyone willing to make donations may write a check to ASME. Attention, Spooktacular. Trick or Treat for the city of Bucyrs will be held Sunday, October 27th, 2024, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. The administration would like to remind everyone that this year's deer lottery is open. Administration would like to remind everyone that this year's deer lottery is open. If you'd like to participate, please contact the mayor's office with your name, address, phone number. The deer lottery will be held on Monday, September 23rd, 2024. Busiris Trails Committee is holding a meet at the Marsh Event Saturday, October 12th, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Crawford County T.I. will be holding their annual Crawford County Drug-Free Youth Rally Thursday, September 19th, 2024, at the Shrine's Art Park from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 The upcoming ribbon cutting, the Crawford County Council on Aging is celebrating their 50th anniversary on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Busiris Goodwill is holding their one-year anniversary ribbon cutting on Thursday, September 26th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Any questions for Service Director?
Yes, sir. Mr. Myers?
On your third bullet point about your meeting with the U.S. EPA, where the plan that we submitted in 2020 had us being at 50% by 2028, and now we're looking at pushing that to 2032, did we fall behind on the proposed plans as what we had in 2020? Or have they laid more on us?
No, they hadn't laid more on us. I think we just fell behind.
Okay. I feel like we've been very diligently and doing quite a lot every year.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It would have helped if the wastewater treatment plant was in works two years ago.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Any other questions for Service Director? Mr. Interim Law Director, Gobrecht?
Thank you. Not much has really changed since my last report. We've been doing public records requests and complying with them as the best of our As for the Hinkle filing for the CIC, all I have to do next is go get some statements from First Federal, and we should make some progress on that. As for legislation, I think I've caught up on legislation. I have outstanding legislation for dispensaries, food truck inspections, ponds, and I think everything else is still in committee. If that's wrong, someone please correct me. I've investigated the parking lot by Wendy's, and as of today, I can say that it's reasonably certain that there's not a lease associated with any of those. And it turned out to just be a rumor. For litigation summary, at the time of the writing, there was no outstanding litigation against the city. However, it came to my attention today that the city received a demand letter dated July 24th that fell through the cracks. And as for that, I would request that we go into executive session to discuss it in more detail. As for this purchase contract for the East Mansfield property, the city did breach its contract with the Thuramans when it failed to close on the date. However, I was in negotiations with the other party, and we have extended the closing date to October 3rd, and they have agreed not to sue the city. For the more details of that, I would also request that we would go into executive session. As for that, that is my report.
Okay, so I think the appropriate time to do the executive session is going to be after the visitors' input, after all of the report of city officers, so we'll just wait till then to do that. Is there any questions for the interim law director?
Are we permitted to go into executive session for two topics, or do we have to have two executive sessions?
We got to state them both.
But they can be done in the same session?
I mean, it's my understanding that they can be.
Just wanted to clarify.
You just have to identify, but, I mean, I'm not the...
Technically, both of these fall under the attorney-client provision, but if you want to do two for parliamentary reasons, we can do two.
I'm just asking for legal purposes. From parliamentary side, I don't mind.
I think they're both covered under discussing things with the attorney that had to do with outstanding litigation.
Okay.
Any other questions for the interim law director?
I don't have any question, but I believe September the 3rd meeting, where we did not have because we didn't have a quorum, was the first meeting that our interim law director was to have started, been here, what have you. We haven't officially...
He was at a committee meeting.
Well, but committee meeting. I mean, at a council meeting, I think it would be nice if he was introduced. And if you wouldn't mind, maybe just give us and the public a little information on, you know, where you went to school as far as for, you know, law and what have you, just...
Sure. My name is Brandon Gobrecht. I was born here in Busiris at the Busiris Community Hospital back in 1995. Born and raised in Busiris, I went to Busiris City Schools up until seventh grade, when I went to the Ohio Virtual Academy, where I graduated. Graduated, went to Ohio State Marion for my undergrad, and then Ohio Northern for my law degree. I graduated in 2023 and passed R. in 2023. Started practicing January 1st, and now I'm here.
Thank you.
And your family owns a business in town?
Oh, yes.
Correct. My dad owns Piznells Pizza, and he bought, he's worked there my entire life, but he bought it when I was 12, and so I started working there when I was 12, and I still pitch in there on the weekends occasionally.
It's nice to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. You told us the other day that the contract's coming up with the county on prosecutor work.
Correct.
Is there any update on that?
Just that the county expressed an interest that they don't want to do it anymore.
Do you know how many days left are in that contract?
Technically, it expired already. And they only have to give us 24 hours' notice to terminate the contract.
So if anybody, what was that agreement, just so the people know?
So the agreement was that the county take over prosecution side for the city law director for $100 a day for every 30-day period, not to exceed $3,000.
So what would happen if they would give us the 24-hour notice right now that they're done doing it?
Well, it would be a conflict for me, as I can only do the civil stuff. I have a thriving criminal defense practice. I can't do prosecutions and criminal defense. So realistically, Brian would either have to come back, or all of the cases that were filed on behalf of the City of Busiris would be dismissed for failure to prosecute.
Is there a third oar where the city can hire another lawyer?
Correct.
Okay.
If you pay me more money, I can do it.
We're already paying one.
Yeah.
Plus him. So I don't know, do we have the money? Do we have the money to pay for this extra prosecutor work?
And is that a function of the administration? The administration would hire an additional attorney if need be to take over prosecution?
But if there's no money appropriated in the budget for it, they can't even pay it.
I'm asking, is it their, is it their job to make that, hire, or make that contract?
I can look into that.
Any final questions for the interim law director? Auditor, Ms. Lewis?
I wanted to start by informing the community that this year's Spooktacular will be held October 19th between 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. I also apologize for having no report for the first meeting of September 2024. Due to the holiday on September 2nd, month ends were processed the same day as the meeting, so I was unable to provide report before the cutoff. I have provided updated revenue reports to council. We have been meeting all revenue projections in each fund except the water fund. For more fun, oh, sorry, guys. Some more funds will need created. For instance, a fund for, and I used the wrong acronym here, OWDA monies for the engineering of the new wastewater plant, new funds for VOCA, our federal grant, and SVAA, our state grant, for receiving those grant dollars for 2025 as for, sorry, as the federal government runs on a different fiscal year than the city. I would also like to, so, and I would like to formally refer to Finance Committee as an emergency, the creation of funds for the OWDA for the wastewater plant, VOCA, and SVAA funds for 2025. Also, to Finance Committee as an emergency, the appropriation of monies to those funds, as well as appropriations to the solid waste contractual services for electric.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to disclose this stuff to Finance?
Yes.
Second.
Ms. Sharick made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Questions for the auditor? Does anybody have any? I have several. Let's just pass these out. We're going to share one. I was looking, so I looked at the reports and the water fund being low, 701. I noticed, I attached the 2023 report here. I went and looked it up, same time last year. And so as of August cumulative, we're $10,000 less than we were last year. Any idea as to why? What's causing that?
Part of it is a TAPS grant that's going out, so we have to remit payment to the grant in order to get reimbursed for those payments. So that's part of it. So some of those large, that, some of those large reimbursements need to come back in. And then we would just readdress revenues. We came in above in 2023. We didn't make our projected revenues in the water fund either, and we had to just reduce revenues and then reduce the places where we didn't use that in the budget. So that's what would happen at the end of this year.
Now, I noticed on the target for the end of the year, like last year, 2023, we were targeting 6.6 million in the water fund.
Mm-hmm.
What's causing the target to be the 8.4 million in 2024?
That was the TAPS grant. So that increased our revenues, but it's that reimbursement process.
So we're not, like, selling less water that's causing...
No, no. We haven't had a huge reduction in, you know, utility usage for our water fund, no.
Okay, so that answers that. The other thing I want to point out, because this was pointed out a couple of meetings ago, the income tax for the safety force levy. We had anticipated in the budget 2.4 million revenue. If we stay on track with where we're heading right now, it looks like we're going to be like a quarter million higher than that this year, like 2.65 million. Is there any, any idea what's causing that yet?
We could just be getting more in in income taxes.
Are they doing more, like, finding habitual out of people that haven't paid their taxes and they're going after them?
Yes, that's part of it. We have different assessments and stuff going on. And then there's also, so before, we, with the out-of-town workers, right, we reduced their credit, but they're still paying that 0.25% for the safety forces levy where the out-of-town workers weren't paying that before either. So we're actually getting a bump from the out-of-town workers in that respect, where we weren't receiving anything from them previously.
So basically, we got lucky and we're making more this year, but we don't know that that's going to be the case.
Yes, we don't know if that will, with the assessments with income tax, that's a good amount of money. They're going back all the way to, like, cases from, like, 2004. But once we run out of backdating those cases, it's just not guaranteed money.
That makes sense. Okay, that's all my questions I had. Does anybody have any other questions for the auditor?
Do you see us, we're pushing more water now to Nevada. Do you see an increase from that or not?
It doesn't run through, I would have to talk to Shay in the utility office. It just comes through as a water payment, so it's not separated out. It all just comes through as a metered water payment on an R. end, so I can talk to her.
So you never got the numbers and said, wow?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Any other questions for the auditor? Fire chief report dated August 2024. Need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved.
Ms. Sharick made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded on favor.
Aye.
And we need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports.
Mr. President, you skipped over the treasurer's report.
I'm so sorry. We need a motion to accept the August 2024 treasurer's report.
Mr. President, I believe that's an acceptance file, and I'll make a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report.
Second.
Ms. Sharick made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded on favor.
Aye.
We have accepted it. Now we need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports.
Make a motion to accept them.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors' input regarding standing special committees and city officers. Is there any visitor input?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. I, earlier when we talked about Councilman Shireman and her pay, I understand what the ORBRC reads, 2%. I'm just curious, what about the 2% for the committee meetings? And that's got nothing to do with her. I'm just curious why there's no mention about that. So in theory, you could be on console, never show up for a meeting, and you're still making half your money, if I'm reading it right.
So this has been brought up before in past councils, past administrations, the whole, is there anything we can do if somebody misses a meeting? In Ohioer Vice Code, there's not much you can do. Vicki found something today that I was totally unaware of, the 2% thing. I never even knew that was in there. But one thing that Busiris could do, so Busiris is what's called a statutory municipality, we could go investigate becoming a charter city. And a charter city, you can write all that stuff in there you want. You could have the total pay of everybody, including the mayor, and then, you know, the law director even. You could have that all based on meeting attendance. The thing is, a charter city, it's like a 12-month process plus enacting that. I'm not opposed to it if you guys want to go down that path and do that.
I don't know if there's a need for that. I'm just, as a citizen, I'm just curious, okay, it seems pretty clear about the 2% for the committee meetings, but I'm lost as far as the, or the council meetings, but I'm completely lost on if they don't, if people don't show up for the committee meetings. And the reason to bring it up, we've already poked this bear. And so if something needs revised or looked at or reviewed or whatever, now would be a good time, because it'll come up again at some point. And just from a taxpayer's point of view, it's probably clean to not kick this thing down the road. Because I definitely don't understand where the other 48% goes. Because I, I definitely don't understand where the other 48% goes. If, if literally, if it, if, if one of you didn't show up, you still draw half your pay for the whole year. Now, that, that can't be the way it's written.
We have our pay, the council members is, you know, might be a couple hundred dollars, you might be out of a meeting, but right now, we have, it was in the news that since the law director is not here, he's still getting his full pay?
I'm gonna discuss that too, so.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I've got, I've got four different mini items here, I'm just, I'm trying to be quick, and I want, I don't want to take too much time, but, uh, I guess I'd be looking for some answer from somebody on how council people are paid, not paid, what causes that, and I understand that, you know, that you guys can vote to, to, uh, uh, make it an approved absence, you know, somebody's in a hospital, that's, that's pretty, pretty simple, or they're home, uh, healing or whatever, I get that, I'm just, it's everything else above that I, I don't, I'm not clear on. Uh, okay, moving on. Um, law director, uh, pay, you know, I've read what it said in Crawford County now, uh, and of course, that's, I, I take that with a reasonable amount of credence, okay, but I guess the short, the short question is, if, using, using law director as an example only, if he's, if he's off for the, for what he's, what the issues are, is he legally allowed to be drawing pay, or is this a special circumstance, and we're still paying him?
That's a unique situation, and from what I've read in Ohio revised code, um, this is what I believe to be true, now, he can comment on it possibly, but there's this ORC 733 dot 35, it's called Mayor Shall File Charges Against Delinquent Officers. I'll read the whole thing. The mayor of a municipal corporation shall have general supervision over each department and of officers provided in the Title VII of the revised code, when the mayor has reason to believe that the head of a department or such officer has been guilty in the performance of his official duty, of bribery, misfeasance, malfeasance, nonfeasance, misconduct in office, gross neglect of duty, gross immorality, habitual drunkenness, he shall immediately file with the legislative authority, except when the removal of such head of department or officer is otherwise provided, provided for written charges against such person, setting forth in detail a statement of such alleged guilt, at the same time or soon thereafter as possible, serve a true copy such charges upon persons against whom they are made, such service shall be made on the person or by leaving a copy of the charge at the office of such person, return thereof thou, return thereof shall be made to legislative authority as provided for return of the service of summons and civil action. And then the very next code, 733 dot 36, hearing of charges, action of legislative authority, charges filed with the legislative authority under Section 733 dot 35 of the revised code shall be heard at the next regular meeting thereof, unless the legislative authority extends a time for the hearing, which shall be done on the application of the accused, the accused may appear in person and by counsel, examine all witnesses, answer all charges against them, judgment or action of legislative authority shall be final, but to remove such officer, the votes of two-thirds of all members elected thereto shall be required. This came up once before, and there was an issue where a council member potentially had a physical altercation, I believe, outside this room with a citizen, or maybe another councilman, and that was when Law Director Crawl was in, and he, I believe there is a document where he made a statement saying that something that could be done is, this process, I believe, where council would have the two-thirds vote thing, and, and he, he might have said in that letter that, yeah, he didn't really want to see us go down that path, because you're disenfranchising the voters, because the voters put that councilman in, or whatever, but I think we're in a situation now where it's literally costing the city thousands of dollars.
It's outrageous.
To pay for two people to be doing one job, so, at what point does something be done?
Well, I guess my first question is, if this is in print, why hasn't that action been taken already? And that's not a lick on you, I don't know who, who's, who's holding, who's holding the bag, but, I mean, the, the minute this came up, and he's not able, he's not able to perform, and I, I'm gonna use, I'll, I'll, I'll put her out there too, if the, if the trash truck driver had the same charges, I question he'd even have a job right now. Okay, so this, I'll, I'll be real frank, this smells like the good old boys, once again, so I want, I'm gonna put that out there, because that's all I can, that's all I can come up with, as far as the correct answer for this, and so, this has been, this has been an issue for about six weeks now, and until I brought it up, nobody's saying nothing about it in this room, and that, that's not right. Yes?
I would just like to remind everybody that we are innocent until proven guilty in this country, in every sec, every circumstance.
I think that's why it would be called a leave of absence with no pay.
Um, so what could happen here, what could happen, is if the mayor would file this thing, um, deliver it to the person, we would then have a hearing at the next meeting of this body, and then, we actually have subpoena powers to compel them to come in, and we could just say, you know, why, how's it come you're not here doing your job, maybe he doesn't show up, I don't know, but, you know, that's, I personally, the, the, the issue with the money is the big concern, the thousands of dollars.
That's, that's me too, you know, if, if there's, if there's legal issues, or he's not been, uh, found guilty yet, or whatever the case may be, I'm good, and great, a, a great play on his part was, he didn't try to get a, a speedy trial, he's dragging this thing out for three months, well, guess who's paying for that, three months? Yeah, that, that's not right.
Um, I agree, I think if he's out, I don't know if he is or not, I've been told that he's been spotted around.
I guess I was told too, I guess, I guess, or whatever.
If that's, if that's the situation, we need to get him up here to continue, so we don't have to pay for two, you know, I mean, it's basically costing 10,000 a month.
I, I agree, I, I agree, okay, so, who's, who's, who's ball is, who's, uh, whose court is this ball in?
Uh, 733 dot 35 says the mayor has to take the first action.
Okay. Uh, third item, uh, pool funding, I know, we just, you mentioned, uh, Mr. Meyer just mentioned there, starting budget concern or talks and all that, and I would like to see a much, uh, much smoother way of funding the pool than everybody and their cousin stepping up and, and covering the city's, the city's expense, and, you know, I, I appreciate everybody spending money, I did too, you know, both personally and as a group, so I'm, I'm, I'm one of them people, because I, I want to see the pool open, I just think that's, that belongs, that, that expense belongs to the city of Bucy, and not having fish fries on the corner, trying to, trying to pay for it. So, I, I want to bring it up now, while it's, you know, it's early September, rather than, you know, middle of December, and all of a sudden, oh, well, we'll have to wait until next year, because that won't, that won't be a pleasant conversation. Uh, last item, I was told in this room, it wasn't during a committee meeting, that the expense for the splash park water, or the, the amount of usage for the splash park water is equal to the whole consumption on a daily basis of Nevada, I have no way, I, I, I can't verify any of that, somebody can, okay, they can, they can, they can look at one meter compared to all those and, and get that figured out, and I, I can't even imagine in 2024 that we have that kind of a waste of water, as expensive as we're all charged for it, you know, is going on, and I heard, I've heard all this folklore about previous administration was in a hurry to get the thing put in, they said screw the, the recirculation system, don't want to do it, it's gonna take more time, I don't know anything about that, but somebody can get that figured out, okay, because, obviously, if, if all that water that gets used goes right down the drain, rather than recirculate into the same filter system that's, that's 200 feet away, called the pool, I just can't imagine that would be that much expensive to plum a line over there to, to hook that thing up, and I'm not an engineer.
We've went over the five minutes.
Okay, so, so who, who has to see that? Who's, who's?
There's, there was, there was an attempt to get a grant to put a recirculation thing out there, um, so that the water gets reused instead of going down the drain, there, there was discussion on a grant for that, I don't, I don't know what ever became of it.
Whether it's a grant or not, it's a, it's a, it's a huge waste of money for the city.
Well, that's.
That's, ideally, that should have been done during the design phase, I don't know why that, who, who, how that fell off the track, I have no idea, but we're, we're paying for that every, every hour that thing's running, and that just doesn't make any sense, and I, I, I would, I'd like to see something better.
If you stop by the mayor's office during the week, he can tell you about that grant, and what, there was some stuff going on with that.
I'm, I'm not interested in grant talk, I'm interested in filter talk, whatever, where it's gonna take, if it's gotta be in the budget, whatever it has to be, to, to, to remedy something that shouldn't have been done to start, and, and nobody in the room here was here during that time period.
You know what, we could refer this to committee. Does anybody want to refer that to committee? This recirculator pump at the Old Memorial Park, uh, splash pad. Public Lands and Buildings Committee?
Health and Safety.
Yeah, I don't think it would be Health and Safety, it'd be Public Lands and Building and Finance.
Where's the swimming pool at?
Possibly, it's, it's Public Lands, the swimming pool's out to Public Lands.
I think that because it's a structural modification, it would go to Public Lands.
Yeah, because you're gonna be digging.
I'll make a motion to refer that to Public Lands and Buildings.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer's made the motion, Ms. Sharick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, any, we've went over the five minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public participation, please come to the podium.
Max Miller, 135 East Kilborn Drive, um, to the law director, I know in your report, uh, we talked to, I saw a little bit about the breach of contract and whatnot with, uh, East Mansfield, but, and I'm not an expert on Ohio revised code, I'll fully admit that, doesn't the mayor need council's approval before they would enter into a purchase agreement on that?
I won't be speaking to that.
Okay, all right, so, the whole 10-minute spiel, Kurt gave that meeting about how, you know, we're being so transparent, it seems like there was already an agreement in place, so, I don't know how transparent that was. Um, a question about the recycling bins that are now in the lot by Wendy's, is that a temporary or permanent, uh, move? Anyone know?
Right, for right now, we moved them out of here, for the sake, it was during the festival, it was, it was a very congested area, so we went ahead and put it there, and we went ahead and put the recycling bins down there on Lane Street as well, because they weren't welcome anymore at the last location, so.
Okay, I appreciate them, I just didn't know if that was gonna be their new home, I haven't seen anything.
Right now, it's, it's very convenient, they could get their truck in there, in and out, right on the alley, and so.
Okay.
So far, it's working out pretty good.
So for foreseeable future, you think they'll be there? Okay, cool. Um, so then, per the eight, 20 minutes, Kurt, you wanted it in record that you never got this Facebook petition from Mr. Hickman, I know the ad hoc policy, uh, committee's working on a social media policy, which seems like we need with this council, and, uh, going forward, and I, I appreciate what you said at the beginning, Vicky, I think, you know, golden rule, treat people how you want to be treated, is a, uh, it's an easy rule that, uh, some people don't seem to be able to follow at all times, but, um, so Kurt, you wanted that in the record, so are you now, like, are you the arbiter of truth on, on Facebook for council members, or are you gonna, is it just Mr. Hickman's?
I'm not under inquisition right now, so I'm not gonna answer that question.
Okay, so you're gonna pass, gotcha. Uh, last thing, and this is probably more for Tommy, um, appreciate the Kilborn Drive work they're doing, uh, you know, I think when I talked to you a couple weeks ago, it's a three-week project, I think we've, we've gone and went past that, uh, any idea on timeline or just notification, like, if they start, you know, I looked out, my front yard, there's a guy up to his shoulders in my driveway where they, you know, took that out, um, appreciate the work, but, you know, if we need to get out, I gotta, I gotta pregnant fiancee that we're scheduling an induction date here probably pretty soon, so, I don't want to have to send a bill for driving through wet cement, uh, to the city, so, any timeline we're looking at, or can we just get notification maybe if they're gonna, you know?
I will talk to them tomorrow.
Okay.
See if we can't get a date and.
Cool.
I'll put it on, yeah, they were, it's supposed to be three weeks.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Congratulations on the coming challenge.
Thank you.
Um, only comment I have to make is, I had, I had, the last meeting we had, I was discussing the YMCA purchase, I had not seen the contract that was signed at the time of me explaining all that, I seen it the next day, for the first time I'd ever seen it. Um, and this kind of falls in with the charter city, I think it might be something we might want to do, I don't know if we can do something with a charter to where any contracts signed by the city, in addition to the administration, the mayor signing them, possibly council president has to sign them too, I think that would be like a second level of reviewing this stuff before it gets into, um, I don't know, that's, as it is right now, the, the ORC and a statutory municipality, the mayor is the one that, we, we couldn't pass anything saying that I, the council president still has to sign something to, I think if you did this, the charter city, you could add that extra level, but, I don't know, we're a long ways away from being a charter city. Any other public participation?
Coris Slater, 3645 State Route 4, um, just something, I know when you brought up the 733 dot 35, um, looking at through this and what, um, the definitions of an officer, um, they do make a distinction between officers that are appointed under an executive branch, so we're talking like Tommy, Safety Service Director, um, officers that work for the mayor specifically, and under his jurisdiction, who can appoint and not, um, the 733 dot 35 is stipulated for that, because they have a separate process for, um, elected officials, which is 705 dot 92, and that can be used for misconduct in office, which is ORC 3 dot 07, and misconduct of office also includes, you know, dereliction of duty, um, a bunch of different things that could be, um, applied to ongoing situations, so that wouldn't be just for the, um, situation with the law director, but that is the official purpose and, and way to do that. I did share with Vicky as well, if there's some mediation, I really think that doing all this out in the open is just not a good look, um, you're always welcome, from what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if there is a impending court action, they can, uh, the council can confer with their legal director under executive session. This mediation that I presented to Vicky is through GRCS, which is through the Ohio Supreme Court, mediation would be, um, the ability for you all to, um, discuss charges against an elective official, or some sort of resolution outside of the formal process. or some sort of resolution outside of the formal process. And from what I'm seeing, it is a possibility that could be done in private, so not all of this is done out on an open floor for everyone to go on and be on the Facebook public opinion or court of opinion. I think that would definitely work for the law director concerns that you have. It would go on to also include any misconduct in office by other officers representing themselves outside of council chambers without the authority of council, calling other state agencies, employers, and what have you, and conducting investigations on behalf of the council without authority. So those are all discussions that can be had in executive session for impending or, I can't remember the other word that they use in there, but it would be at any time that you were considering some sort of court of action. So that being said, attendance, dereliction of duty, all of that drunkenness is listed under malfeasance and under the 3.07. All of those conversations, in my opinion, should probably be had in private, so we're not making us look like more of a spectacle, so... With that, I hope that a motion for that discussion is had because I think you all have much to discuss. Thank you.
My comment on that. I looked on the executive session law 121.22G1. One of the reasons we can go into executive session is to consider the appointment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public official, against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual unless a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing. Except as otherwise provided by law, no public body shall hold an executive session for the discipline of an elected official for conduct related to the performance of the elected official's official duties. So we can't go into executive session to discuss the law.
So if you look at G3, mediation is actually a separate situation. Mediation, GRCS, is an impending court action, and that is provided to you all to get a, basically like a judge, to go with this with you guys in private for free, is something given to you by the Supreme Court of Ohio. And in there is question 26, do you have that with you? You don't? Okay. Question 26 was that his executive session is allowed? It is allowed under G3, as I stated for referring to your law director for imminent court action, and there was actually precedent legal cases listed under that FAQ. I'd be more than happy to provide that all to you so you can see that you actually do have the ability to go into executive session to discuss mediation under G3. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Okay, moving on, so this is where we were going to do the executive session. Vicki, do you know which, the one that he was adding in here tonight? Is it the G3 conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action?
That's one.
Well, that's one of them. The other one is number one, the purchaser...
It's G2, is the purchaser real property?
Yeah, but we need to state the other one too in addition to that.
Gotcha.
You looking them up, Vicki?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking. What are you going into executive session for?
Well, he said that thing that he got from July that looks like there's legal stuff coming towards us is one.
So 121.22G3, that's for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court
Does that sound like Mr. Govrick, what would cover the issue that you're... Okay, so then I entertain a motion to enter into the executive session with the mayor, service director, auditor, council president pursuant to Ohio revise code 121.22G2 to discuss the purchase of real property along with G3.
You should say the whole thing.
121.22G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Are you ready for a motion now?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a motion. Roll call.
Myers.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Me seconded. Roll call.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
We're in executive session at 8:16.
I said get the doors and windows closed.
Need a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded. Need a roll call.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
We are out of executive session and back in regular meeting at 9:00 PM. Moving on, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 32-2024, it's the traffic control map regarding Pearl Street, amending the traffic control map and file established by the sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio, to provide henceforth for the placement of a stop sign on the southeast corner of Pearl Street and Nevada Road for the northbound traffic. Proposed resolution 227-2024, it's the 2025 OPWC grant, a resolution authorizing the service safety director on behalf of the City of Bussaras to prepare and submit an application for a 2025 Ohio Public Works Commission grant in the amount of $185,000 for water line replacement on South Sandusky Avenue and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 228-2024, it's the purchase of property regarding the YMCA building. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and service safety director on behalf of the City of Bussaras to enter into a real property purchase agreement for payment in the amount of $105,000 and no cents, plus seller's closing cost in the amount of $7,873.75 for real property located at 233 East Mansfield Street, Bussaras, Ohio, permanent parcel number 08-0014921.000, from Andy and Tina Thurman, and authorizing and directing the mayor and service safety director to issue a letter of donation in the amount of $100,000 and no cents to Andy and Tina Thurman, further authorizing and directing the Bussaras City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants and payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations. Proposed resolution 229-2024, it's the selling of the North End Tire Station. A resolution authorizing and directing the service safety director on behalf of the City of Bussaras to advertise for bids for the sale of 606 North Sandusky Avenue, Bussaras, Ohio, permanent parcel numbers 08-0050047.000 and 08-0050048.000. All said parcels being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes. Further authorizing and directing the service safety director to set the minimum bid for a fermented property to be no less than $262,500 and no cents, and to enter into a purchase agreement with the highest and best bidder, and to deliver a quick claim deed therefore while reserving the right to reject any and all bids.
Any motion to accept those as a first reading?
So moved.
Mr. Myers made the first, Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation as been read for the first time. Seeing none. Referring back to originated committee. Proposed ordinance 32-2024 referred back to health and safety. Proposed resolution 227-2024 referred back to service. Proposed resolution 228-2024 referred back to public lands and buildings. Proposed resolution 229-2024 referred back to public lands and buildings. Committee report on pending legislation. Health and safety committee.
The health and safety committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 32-2024 dealing with amending the traffic control map and file for the placement of a stop sign on the southeast corner of Pearl Street and Nevada Road for northbound traffic.
Service committee.
Service committee is in favor of proposed resolution 227-2024, 2025 OPWC grant.
Public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable for the proposed resolution 228-2024, purchase of property YMCA. Public lands and buildings is favorable for the proposed resolution 229-2024, selling of the North End Tire Station.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution 227-2024, which is the OPWC grant, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 227-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
Yes.
Proposed resolution 227-2024 is duly adopted.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
For proposed resolution 228-2024, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded. Need a roll call vote.
Yep. Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 228-2024?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
No.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Hickman?
No.
Me?
No.
DeShawn?
No.
Shireman is absent.
Proposed resolution 228-2024 is held to a first reading.
No.
No, sir.
It fails.
It fails.
It fails. Fail. 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 We need an emergency piece.
Oh, the emergency, yeah, there's no... Oh, you're right, you're right. Proposed ordinance, proposed resolution 220-2024 is not duly adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers.
For proposed resolution 229-2024, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded. Roll call.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Muritz?
No.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Proposed resolution 229-2024 is held to first reading because it did not get the six votes. Two way of the second and third reading. Old and unfinished business. Anybody have any? The tax levy, Mr. Myers, the property tax levy to purchase equipment, if it was to pass, we're getting very close to early voting starting. Is there any way you could get ahold of the news media and possibly see if they could run an article on what exactly that levy is going to purchase? So that way, it's very clear to the public that this is for equipment only, what, you know, how many pieces of equipment the police department's going to get, the fire department. Maybe you could even tell them like the history of how old some of the equipment is, like how many cop cars got how many miles on them and stuff like that.
I'd have to do that.
That'd be very good for the public to know that. Any other old business? Mr. Me?
We received an email from Brittany Gates, and she wanted to replace, what was his name?
Richard Barton.
Barton, Richard Barton, on the International Property Maintenance Code Ad Hoc Committee. So do we need a motion for that, or?
I think we would need a motion for that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Brittany Gates to replace Mr. Barton on our International Property Maintenance Code Ad Hoc Committee.
I'll second.
Mr. Me made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Brittany Gates has now been placed on the ad hoc committee.
Would you let her know?
Yeah.
Miranda?
Yeah, okay.
Second of all, as Chair of the IPMC Ad Hoc Committee, I am making a motion to remove Councilman Carolyn Shireman from my IPMC Ad Hoc Committee.
Mr. Me made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded to remove Councilwoman Carolyn Shireman from the IPMC Ad Hoc Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So Carolyn is removed. Any other old business? New business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. DeShawn.
At the August 8, 2024 Economic Development Committee meeting, I had reported out that Mr. Hickman and myself had met on July 8 with former Crawford Partnership President David Zach to discuss the Joint Economic Development District, also known as JID. At that meeting, Mr. Zach also discussed with us the Citizen Entrepreneurial Development Agency, also known as CEDA. At the committee meeting, I had stated that I would be requesting the referral of CEDA to the Economic Development Committee. Little late, but at this time, I do wish to make a motion that CEDA be referred to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aaron, did you want to talk about that Kiwanis flyer?
Um, it was written once, but sure. Um, the Bussaras Lions Club is having their Walk for Pediatric Cancer on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at nine A M. at Allmiller Park. Now, they are also asking for sponsors. Sponsorship levels are five hundred dollars for the gold level, two hundred and fifty for the purple level, one hundred for the white level, but any donations are greatly appreciated. Remember, all these monies go for pediatric cancer. And if you would like to sponsor, please feel free to call four-one-nine-six-one-seven-two-five-seven-five. Once again, the number to call is four-one-nine-six-one-seven-two-five-seven-five, to help sponsor the Walk for Pediatric Cancer, held by the Lions Club.
Thank you.
The fly-in brought back up, too.
Is there any other, what's that, the Pancake Breakfast?
Yep. That's this Saturday, from eight A M. to six P M. They're gonna have the Pancake Breakfast and Fly-In at the Cracker County Airport at Port Bussaras. There's a flea market, car show, farmer's market, antique tractors, there's a kitty tractor pole, um, there's various team presentations from the FAA. Loretta, I am so sorry, I can't, what is it?
Schmoller.
Schmoller presentation, because she was the Aerial Nurse Corps of America, person who helped start our airport. And there's bounce house for the kids, R C airplanes, drone demonstrations, baked goods for sale, food trucks, it'll be a whole, fun, all-day launch.
Any other new business? Do we have a motion to excuse the council member that's absent? No motion, then we will go over the referrals.
Creation of funds for the OWDA wastewater treatment plant, for the wastewater treatment plant, VOCA and S V A A for twenty twenty-five to finance appropriation of monies to the OWDA grant for the wastewater treatment plant, VOCA and S V A funds for twenty twenty-five, and to appropriate to the solid waste fund for electric to finance, uh, recirculator pump for the splash pad, public lands and buildings, uh, the CEDA to Economic Development Committee.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to excuse someone to have them unexcused? Or just lack of motion causes them to be unexcused?
Lack of motion causes them to be unexcused.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Um, that also reminded me, uh, the baby pool. I'd like to see that get whatever it needs to get working for next season, and rather than us being late here, could we refer that to public lands and buildings so that it could start to be discussed in case they need it?
I would be glad to make a motion to refer the baby pool to public lands and buildings.
So moved.
Aaron made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. So that's an additional referral there, the baby pool.
Added the referral story, Miranda.
With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're adjourned at nine sixteen.
So moved.